I will call the Wall City Council meeting October third to order. Carolyn, if you would like to call roll call.
Huffman.
Here.
Morgan. Stan Anderson.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Pop. Mike Anderson.
Yes.
We have a plot.
Okay, let us stand and say the pledge of allegiance. Pam, can you lead us please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the perfect and justice for all.
Is there any order of business for emergencies?
No.
Okay, and is there attendance on Zoom?
How about that Jerry back yet? He was planning to attend, I'll let you know when he does come in.
Okay, very good. Alright, that moves us on then to the police report. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. So the month of September was pretty chill for us. You guys should have the police report in front of you. The only thing that really stands out is the one former call that stems from a fatality that we had on the interstate midway through the month. You guys probably saw that on the news. So everything else is pretty straightforward. Numbers are kind of going down, the summer's wrapping up, school started, so. Yeah, not a whole lot going on around town. I might jinx myself, so they'll probably have. You guys have any questions for me?
How was it? Did you guys receive the message in regards to the traffic on Fourth Avenue?
Yes, I watched, I watched the meeting for last month as well. I tried patrolling a little bit of that today, yesterday. I was able to leave, I think, one person. So we are, we are actively working on it. We're aware of the traffic around town. You know, in front of the school during the school hours, Glen Street, so these are something that we're looking at, and then Fourth Avenue since we got that information on, so. Yeah, thank you.
And what about Prairie Village? Do you continue to visit there occasionally?
Yes, we usually try to do a walk-through once in a while to shift, just walking through, keeping eye on things, talking to people. Hopefully a resolution before they come over, we can call there, but yeah, we try to keep a presence in all parts of the town, so, including Prairie Village.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, any other questions this evening? Thank you, thank you for what you do for us.
You guys have a good night.
You have a good day.
You too.
Okay, with that, I would call for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, does anyone have a need to declare a conflict of interest this evening with anything on the agenda? Hearing seeing none. May I have a motion then to approve the minutes of the September nineteenth meeting?
So moved.
Okay, Zach moved.
Second.
And Mike is seconded. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries to approve the minutes for September nineteenth. In front of you also are the claims for the city of Wall, the fire department, and the library. And after you've reviewed those, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
To move.
Stan has moved.
Second.
And Mike is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, also in your packet was the on-call schedule for the employees, the water usage, the sales tax report, and the budget report. And we should have another payment, you think, Carolyn, coming for September. Is that true?
We will, yeah. It just, I thought maybe we'd get it today, but within the next week we should.
Hopefully that will bolster us back up there in that department. BBB seems to be holding. But we'll look forward to additional payment. And any thoughts or question on the expense report that was submitted? Okay. Moving on then to our visitors. Rick Reed, would you like to visit with us tonight about the cable TV renewal contract with Golden West?
Yeah. So the agreement with Golden West in the back of the place must be the year two thousand. But anyway, it was, it's been renewed over a couple of different times with twenty-year terms. The current term is going to expire in November, so it needs to be renewed. We talked about it a little bit beforehand, but it's not sure on the process. There's a couple of when you look at this, the way it appears, twenty years ago, it was on a, basically on a motion and approval of a motion, as opposed to an artist reading, a second reading, and that whole process. Was the city attorney present today?
No.
I don't know how that works from a legal perspective. This is the first one I've seen that way. But doesn't mean it's the only one.
Well, from the minutes that you shared, a bit ago, that were taken from two thousand four. At that time, it was George Strandle, and he addressed the council and just proposed renewing the franchise to provide cable television service to the city of Wall. And it was simply a motion and a second, a motion by Doyle, second by Paul, to approve a twenty-year term for Golden West to operate in Wall effective that day. So it appears what needs to be done again to follow precedence that's been established is to give Golden West another twenty-year renewal. Does anyone read that any differently or feel any differently about that, or?
So when you commented this is building when you've seen like that, you have the same agreements that
I got forty-six of these things across the state, yeah.
And so they're all different?
Yes. And there are three or four of them that I found that have the same kind of language, similar type of language. It doesn't really speak to the language, it just says, to the point there in the minutes, it says this happened. So the question is, is that right or not right kind of thing? The moment the franchise is, is it's actually a document that we have to have, the FCC requires we have a franchise agreement with the city to, for us to make use of right ways, et cetera, within the city, so.
But Rick, it's, it's just an agreement for you to be, to operate in Wall, and it doesn't, there's no fees or things tied to it?
No, none of that kind of stuff. It's just, if we don't have, if we don't have it, then the FCC says we can't run the system, so. We don't have permission from the city, we don't have the franchise, so.
Well, we're sure thrilled Golden West is in Wall, and I'd make that motion.
Okay, so it's been moved to approve, approve the renewal of the Golden West Cable Vision franchise for another twenty years.
Okay, second.
Okay, and Zach is seconded. Any other questions? For this, from other council members? Okay, hearing seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries then.
And I imagine if that isn't good enough, if we made aware that that doesn't work, we, we just, if, if we found out that this, what we just did, isn't gonna work, then I'm sure that somebody will reach out and get in touch with you and
Yep.
basically do what we need to do.
Then I'll be back, so, maybe calling for a special meeting or something.
Otherwise, we see you, what, twenty years?
Obviously, it worked for the last twenty, so.
Like I said, I got forty-six of these things to do, so I don't know if you'll see me in twenty years. It won't look the same, I guarantee.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Yeah, thank you, Rick.
Okay, so then our next visitor tonight is Travis Hershey with Mead Hunt, and he, he's here to talk about airport. Good evening.
Always here to talk to our airports. Don't stop, appreciate you taking the time to listen to me here today. It's a, it's an exciting day here for our airports. We have come to the completion of our runway project. It's kind of been held out for a little while, waiting for some final paperwork, but it's time to, time to finalize it here. So what I'm really here to talk to you about is, you know, we've had this runway open now for roughly eleven months or so. I think we opened it up in November. And at this point, we've received their final payment. Really what we were waiting on, on why this dragged out for so long, was some final operating and maintenance manuals. I wanted to make sure that they were sufficient for you guys, you know, if that say a common time where you need to replace a light or something, we've got that information available for you. That's all now sitting in our vault, ready, ready to go, so. And obviously, we're available when, if there's any questions that come up, or what happens with that. So tonight, I've got three documents that I'm looking for approval on and signature. The first of them is being the substantial completion, and that's saying that the project we agreed is substantially complete and has met our contract expectations. We've done reviews in person. I believe our review was completed upon and you guys have the, you have these documents, the three documents here in your council packet, it's perfect. We did complete this review on November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, so this is just saying that we agree that the project is substantially complete and, and open, and there's no outstanding items for Western Construction to complete on the project. So that's going to be our first document. I have a change order number three, so this is our final change order for the project, and the intention of the final change order is just balancing out to say that our contracted amount meets the amount of money that we're paying. So a couple items I want to talk about, and we have some pretty standard or typical construction variations, but there's some, you know, when you're talking a project of, of roughly five, five and a half million dollars, a typical contract deviation is a rather sizable amount of money. So I'm going to just go into the big ones. We had some unclassified excavation, then we have fifty-three thousand dollars of additional unclassified excavation. That was the, we had to open up some borrow pits to make sure we had enough material to, to build the runway. We borrowed from one of the sides of the hill, and basically, we didn't have enough material. What happens is when you move material from one spot to another, and you compact it, it loses volume. So when you moved it, when we moved the material and compacted it, it lost volume. And we didn't, and that, that amount that it loses volume is super tough to estimate. I can't, I'd love to get a geotech engineer to tell me what number that is, but we make an estimate that it's twenty-five percent that you lose. In this case, it ended up being roughly, well, roughly seven percent more than that, and that's what fifty-three thousand dollars represented there. So that's the biggest overrun on, on the high end. One of the exciting things is I've got an under run on asphalt in a, the degree of a quarter million dollars, so. You know, once again, some, some interesting things here. I go and estimate, when I go in and estimate, estimate a project for, for asphalt, I have to take a guess at what the contractor is going to use for the amount of asphalt in their, in their mix. Well, it turned out Western Construction used a lesser amount of asphalt than my estimated yes. And then that ended up saving us a lot of money. You know, I also have to estimate on the tonnage and the density we get for that asphalt. It turns out, I estimate it a little high. You know, I do these things to make sure that we have enough grant money. You know, there's, there's a little engineering ahead of time that you make sure things are that go for a plan for you, you know, and overall, we're talking that's the oil was rather significant. They actually came in with a really low oil amount, you know, it fully met the spec. You know, no, no concerns there, but, but it ends up saving, saving us some money. And I think the last one that I wanted to just mention is that, you know, there's various ones here, but what do we got here? We got I think the last one I wanted to mention was the seating and hydro mulching with that open borrow pit. We ended up paying a little extra seating and a little, little extra mulching, right? So that all being said, our final change order estimate is for a reduction of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars on the project, so roughly five percent of project cost. So we're roughly five percent under project costs on this, on this project, you know. These are the fun ones, you know, when I come here and I'm like, five percent under budget, you know. These are, these are the exciting, so. So nice to see that, right? You'll get the same runway product or project, less money, so. That being said, our engineering costs are looking to be under as well. I don't know the exact costs at this point, but probably the fifteen to seventy-five thousand dollar range, so. So we're looking at significant project other ones, so. I like having these conversations with you guys. Everybody's happy about this kind of conversation, so, either way. And then our last item we have here is our, our, our final payout. So our pay estimate, so that's going to be our final pay estimate for, to pay Western, that, that final balancing amount. We're looking for a hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. And that is the reason why we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left on the project, that's mostly retained. We've been holding about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars mostly to get these final documents, and we finally got them, and I'm kind of surprised Western didn't come asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars earlier than this, but you know. We're, we're here now, so. But either way, the one thing I want to talk about then too, a little further on this, is we've been held, when we have these grants, we get held at eighty-nine point nine percent of project reimbursements, and we hit that mark back in April. So we haven't received reimbursements from the FAA or the DOT since April. Granted, we haven't had any of these big payouts or any any of these costs, you know, large costs, you know, we haven't had engineers in the field or anything like that. So now that we have another hundred and fifty thousand dollars in substantial completion, I'm going to follow up with this tomorrow to get us a request that we can go from that eighty-nine point nine percent to ninety-five percent, and that's going to cover all our project costs. And the, hopefully, we'll be looking at reimbursement for, there's actually a sizable amount, amount of money out there, I believe. Carolyn and I were working on that a little bit, but hopefully, we'll be seeing some, some reimbursements by the FAA's I'm hoping by like October fifteenth, because I'm shooting for, um, the the, the big thing with it is the FAA's fiscal year ended on, on September thirtieth, and they, they stopped making payments for about a two-month, or a two-week period where they're trying to figure out their own, their own checking and account. That's been opening up on October tenth, and then hopefully, we can get this reimbursement in and get this cash flow back as quick as possible, so.
Very good.
So that's the wall, the, that's the, that's the runway project, so I guess I would have, request the, the city council to authorize the mayor to sign and approve the, the change order, the substantial completion, and the final payout, unless there's any other questions that somebody has on anything, so.
And we are going to review this.
Yes. Yep, so, so yeah, let me talk on that. So on October, or on August twentieth, we met, Garrett came out to the airport, worked in landscaping, Western Construction, and we had Dalton, one of our engineers on site. And basically, we didn't get the growth of, of grass mixture that we're looking to have. So we have a one-year warranty on this project, and that's one of our documents I believe you guys have in your, in your board packet. We're going to reevaluate that right before that one-year warranty is up, and if we need to go out and resee it, it'll be at no cost to the city, so. Need to make sure that we have the right grass mixture, the, the, our, our landscape for ward and, or ward landscaping is hoping that that some of this winter, or this Western weed will pick up in the next spring. It usually takes a little bit of time to grow. But if it doesn't, you know, we'll be looking at some, some additional, there's some repair there, so. So we got a year warranty on the project, so.
Okay. So Garrett, anything else that you need to mention, or?
No.
That's, that's the main thing.
Yeah, a couple other things that we did do here is that the beacon had some issues on it early on. That has been repaired at this point. That was another reason we were holding payment for report. What happened is, I believe the manufacturer sent his beacon, and the, I think it was the, the white side of it. The lens didn't have a seal on, on it properly. It got wet and LED, like, you know, you know, manufacturing error, right, so. So Muth electric was able to work with the, the, their manufacturer and get us a new beacon or, or that repaired. The other thing is, we had some went some lights that we had to adjust, that took a little bit of time, but it was simple repair. Muth electric took care of it, so. You know, I'd get, I'd like to acknowledge the, the work that Western Construction and moved, they, they honestly did a outstanding job, so. They were, you know, it's, I work with a lot of contractors. Western was very nice to work with, and I appreciated that, so. You know, it's, it's good to have some of those good working relationships, but either way, going back to the, the, I guess my recommendation would be to, to, to move forward with those, those three documents.
Okay, substantial completion, and does that need to be in separate motions? Would you think, Carolyn?
Yeah, especially the change order and the pay request, I guess, like those three, yeah, three in separate.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approved the change order number three from Mead and Hunt. Second.
Okay, so Rick has moved and Mike has seconded to approve change order number three. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. May I have a motion for substantial completion, completion?
So moved.
Zach has moved.
Second.
And Mike seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And so then, finally, a pay, to approve the pay request, final pay request for a hundred and fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents.
So moved.
Stan is moved.
Second.
And Zach seconded. Any other questions? Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Do you mind if I walk you guys through our, we had two other projects, and just since I have the council here, I'd like to just talk about some of our projects that we have going on.
Yes, please.
The, so I think everyone got my, my little status report here, but the other project we're working on is our airport G I S. We're working with N V Five, who is a, a company who specializes in this G I S, airport G I S court. They've completed the imagery in, in June, so that, that means they, they flew them over the aircraft and got an work, an, an image, some of that. I'm working on getting that final picture still. I haven't gotten the compiler yet. Working on getting that. They completed some survey in August, and then just on September here, we were able to, or we uploaded the, the survey plan and the imagery to the FAA's data portal. So now it's sitting in the FAA's hands, so I'm praying that they get on this and get working on this. And then from there, what, what we're really looking at is they'll review it, and then we'll get some updated data in our, in the portal. We're going to have our, our updated master plan record, and some things that their, that pilots care about, and it's a requirement, it's part of doing a runway project like this, so we have all the correct information. And hopefully, I'll have to look at, you know, it's really going to depend on how fast the FAA reacts to these things, their, their own control. You know, I wish, I wish I could have a little bit more control over what they're doing. The other project we're looking to do is a, a GA taxi lane and apron expansion. We talked about this earlier. We, we got the, the approval for the grants agreement. The FAA's fiscal year, like I said, is recently reopened. We resubmitted it, and I'm looking for a, a grant agreement, hopefully, in late this year, early, early twenty-five. You know, it depends on how fast their, once they're, they will, will turn around the grants, but hopefully, we get that, and then we'll get, then we'll get a, a contracts out of Mead Hunt or for the design work, and then we'll get going on the design and be, be ready for some of the hangar development. I hear there's a, there's a lot of interest, even, even a late, that Carolyn, you've gotten some, some, some calls and stuff, so. It would be great to, you know, diversify our clientele out at the airport, our tenants, and, you know, shoot for sustainability of our airport in the future, so. That is all I have, so I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you, thank you.
Good job. Okay, and another visitor I see in our audience is Jay from that's done a mar, his company has done a marvelous job on Fourth Avenue, and he's here to to give us some information about that.
It's a hard act to follow because I don't have two hundred and two thousand dollars for you. That's what I was going to say. I'll embarrass you, council. Well, I first of all apologize, as I've visited with numerous residents and people in town over the past two days, and apparently, when the town rain stops. So it's been very dry around here, so I apologize for that. Way things get to. Though this afternoon, we wrapped up all council items. Done a walk-through with Garrett and Bruce both, and don't have anything out there remaining. We're going to warranty, one-year warranty at this point on seating and servicing. Be back out sometime August, till we get servicing next year. If you see something earlier, by only three, y'all let us know. And, and seating, if we don't see good established growth in the spring, that'll be at no cost to you guys to have our seater come back in and oversee every thing. So we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city. We've really enjoyed being out here. We wish we had more work out here. The four and a half hour drive of me is kind of getting old at this point. Is there any questions for me or anything I can do for you?
Well, we have a big event planned for in the morning at nine o'clock. And I want to invite the council members. We're going to do a ribbon cutting. And we'll be meeting at the intersection of Fourth Avenue and Airport Road. And we'll have chamber economic development and the businesses that have been impacted along this avenue who have been so cooperative and patient and kind of taken the brunt of this. All of them have been invited to be at this event for the ribbon cutting, so. We'll see you tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, and if you council members could please join us, that would be absolutely fabulous.
I was looking for this to never easy, you know, with residents and businesses, so we appreciate your patience and the willingness to work with us and speed things along, so. It's been a lot of fun for us to say the least. We've really enjoyed it, so thank you.
Well, it's great to work with somebody that's accomplishes their project as far ahead of time as what you, you did, according to what the projection was, so. Good job.
It's been dryer out here, we've been doing it sooner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us then to our agenda item. Is Jerry here?
He didn't think he would be here.
Okay. Okay, so if you look at his request, he's requesting to block the west side of Glen Street in front of three oh seven and south to the corner of Fourth Avenue, and it, and he's got the approval of Rush Funeral Home. And he's requesting some barricades to be put up. And do we understand why it is that he wants this?
So he's having an option to sell his building over there and some of his stuff, and so he thinks he'll want to bring some of that stuff out, so it's easy access for people to see rather than having it all in his building. Hoping for good weather, that's going to be in November.
It'll be like a one day or two, maybe two days.
Just one day, one day, yeah.
So what day does he want to do that? We're not sure.
He didn't really put it on here.
No, no.
Sometime in November.
Because it was kind of, he was kind of undecided at that time, and then somebody told me the other day, it took the phone call. I'm going to say November and four. November fourth on Monday, but maybe that is a better day for, I don't know.
Okay, so would I have a motion to approve this request then to block off a portion of that street for the purpose of an option?
And is it just the westbound lane? To move.
Okay, Stan is moved.
Second.
Mike second. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, next on the agenda then is the opportunity for anyone who would like to take three minutes to speak regarding to any issue that is on or not on the agenda, but action will not be taken. Do we have any public comments today? Okay, moving on then to permits. Kirby Keiser has a renewal for Airbnb at five hundred Crown Street. Conditional use permit. And how long does that renew for?
Three years.
Okay.
No good proof.
Okay. Rick has moved and Zach has seconded. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And then Tricia, Tisha here would like to renew her hair salon. And that would be for three years also?
So move.
Okay, Stan is moved.
Second.
Mike seconded. Any comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item sixteen. We have a plat for uh, NAP's first edition lot two A, three A and four A. This is just a replat. Dividing those, the dotted lines on your, um, plat indicate the way the lots are now. But then the dark lines indicate how, how they would like that replatted.
Go from four to three.
No, is this commercial property residential?
The, well, wait a minute. I think the one on the corner is Russia.
The big one right in the office.
I'd have to look on my nap. There's been so much back and forth. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't tell for sure.
Seems right.
Okay, so do I have a motion then to approve this plat that's been presented to us uh, for NAP's first edition lot two A, three A, four A? Zach moved.
Second.
And Mike seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, in front of you also is the airport lease ground improvement agreement. This would be with Preston Johnson and this, if you have, uh, reviewed this, it just indicates what the terms and conditions are. Uh, as far as what he's gonna do for the hay ground inside of the airport fence. That uh, some of that ground we have, uh, let bids for to be hay, but it's just, uh, as we talked about last time, that ground is just not up to par and he is presenting us with uh, a plan here and it'd be a five-year lease and tells how's it, how he's gonna to till it and what the weed control will be and uh, how he's going to, um, provide us a base with soil samples and then uh, at the end of four years, he will, uh, again, let us know what the situation is as far as the ground. Is there any questions or thoughts on this? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the airport lease ground improvement agreement with Preston?
So move.
Okay, it's moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Stan seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, also, uh, item number seventeen is airport hay, hay ground improvement agreement. And what, uh, we are seeking there is that the ground that Kirstad's Kirstad Farm used to farm for wheat, which is right west of the, uh, I P Park. They no longer want to farm it. They notified us of that when we, um, were dealing with the extension of the airport. So now, uh, we are seeking, we will be seeking someone that will go in and, uh, will need to spray that ground off, till it and, uh, I would think we would want to plant that so we could have the same kind of, uh, crop that we have in industrial parks and now that would help bring in, uh, proceeds to the city because we'll have a larger area to to, uh, bid out for hay. Although as we sell lots in the I P, that will, will start to decrease. But there's about a hundred, between a hundred and fifty, two hundred acres in this next block. So what we're talking about there is just, we're just discussing the fact that that needs to be done. And we'd like to move forward with an agreement, bring that back to you in the future of that. If you agree that that's a good idea to plant a crop of additional alfalfa, oats and alfalfa and get that reseeded so it would become a revenue source. Is there any?
So you, you're trying to think we see if somebody take bids to kind of do the planting of the alfalfa and the spraying and?
Yes, we would advertise that we'd need that done and is there somebody out there that would like to do that for us?
Doesn't, but they would get no guarantee that they would get to rent it once it's.
Well, that is a thought that perhaps that's one way that, um, a thought that was, uh, suggested is that it ordered for the city not to have to pay this to be done, let them plant it and then agree that they would take that first crop off. And that would be the payment. That way the city would not have to actually come up with dollars to hire them. Is that a feasible?
Yeah, I think that would be. Has it been sprayed yet?
No.
No. It's pretty much, the kosher weeds are pretty much dead out there.
Garrett and I went and looked at it and
dry enough.
So this would be a spring project, but we need to let people know that it's available so they can kind of put it in their planting plans and their budget to take on another couple of hundred acres.
So would that include the spraying and? Well, I think so.
It'd be their cost to spray it, till it, plant it, or it could be no tilt, I guess, right? Spray, planted and then they take that first crop. That would keep us from having to come up with dollars. Okay, we, Carolyn, let's make note then to bring an agreement back uh, that looks like that so we could go ahead and advertise that. Okay, so moving on then, uh, we have the American Tower abatement for property tax. You can explain this to us, Carolyn.
From what I understood, her to explain to me is
Then we're talking about the auditor, the county auditor explaining.
So this was taxed as a building, so to speak, and a utility. So it was like double taxed. So portion of that has to go back. All that was, it was money received to the city or paid to the city, so we can't double tax. And there was an error on their end, but we received the extra tax on it, so we need to pay it back. I think it's eighteen hundred and twenty dollars.
Uh, one thousand two hundred eight dollars.
So they'll just deduct that from our next property tax payment that we received from them. They'll just don't check out to be written anything.
So where is this American Tower at? We're not talking the same tower that Mr. Reed was talking about.
No, I believe it's on Waldo's.
Yeah, I believe we paid the property tax on it. They leased the site from us.
Yeah, I, it was double taxed.
It's, uh, close to the cemetery, right? Is it Ken behind the water tower? I get kind of lost track.
Well, if you're driving down two forty and you look to the east, it's right on top. The tower's there and then water tower is behind it.
Behind it, yeah.
So it's just a, and a mistake and we're trying to make it right and they've brought it to our attention. But there's no dollars, they'll just deduct.
They'll deduct, but I do need to have a motion so that then I can sign off on the paperwork and get a return back to them.
Okay. Okay, Mike has moved that we, um, he is approving the abatement of the property tax on the American Tower. Is there a second? Zach has seconded. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. We are at the point where we are, um, uh, asking for approval for the first reading of the ordinance twenty-four oh two, which is the revision of ordinances, which you got two weeks ago to read, uh, through. And, um, this is something that needs to be done because we took some of the ordinances out of the original group, put it over in the zoning ordinances. So now we need to get these approved so we can move forward with these. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-four oh two to revise ordinances?
So move.
Okay, Rick has moved.
Second.
And Mike seconded. Any other questions or concerns?
It was nice that it was quite a bit shorter.
Yeah.
And I thought that helps.
Okay. Any other? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay. The next item is, uh, a meeting etiquette policy. Uh, what we discovered was that we had meeting guidelines, but we actually did not have meeting policy. And so, uh, I would ask if you have read that and would agree that that is a policy that we could put in place and Carolyn would be able to locate it. And it just speaks that, uh, with the, it's for public use so that people would be aware of the fact that they have to get on the agenda forty-eight hours if they want to be on the agenda. If they, um, if they have not completed an agenda, it just simply states that they'll have three minutes, which is exactly what we have on every one of our meeting agendas. So that coincides, asking people to, uh, be recognized by the chair if they would like to speak. And if a council member wants to respond or ask a question, that would be in, inside a one-minute response, but it wouldn't take one of, any of their minutes. And just asking people in attendance that they don't visit in the audience, um, that would cause interruption for the meeting. And reminds people that city council meetings are scheduled for the first and third Thursday of each month. So is there any, was there anything there that you would object to or you would find offensive to anyone or?
On number two, it says, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. Like, doesn't the county, they have you fill out like a little piece of paper or something before the meeting starts? Could that be something sort of raising hands if they want to speak to, fill out a piece of paper and then be recognized?
Well, they, if, from the meetings I've seen, those are at the door and they have to fill them out when they come in. Where this might provide a more spontaneous, because if someone's here and they want to ask about where's the American Tower at? You know, they could raise their hand and be recognized, whereas they might not think about that before, is my thought.
I, I agree. I, I think raising hands works pretty good for us at a smaller meeting.
Okay, so with that then.
So then it will become part of the ordinances or?
No, it's a policy.
Yeah.
Cause what we, what we discovered, okay, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say I would maybe even put it posted on the door. So that, for a while, you know, so that people as they're coming, you know, they would be able to see that and be aware of that.
There was a similar document, but it was entitled the guidelines. It was in the minutes as it was guidelines. And, but it was referred to as being a policy. When we went to find that policy, we couldn't find that policy and we had to dig to find the guidelines. But we're just trying to put policy. So it's in her policy book and can easily be referenced to. So with that being said, would I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Zach has moved.
Second.
Stan is seconded. Any other discussion or questions, concerns? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, item twenty-two then, Wall Economic Development Director, welcome.
All right. Hello. All right, um, so I, I don't have much to report this week, um, but we, um, on October seventeenth at ten thirty A M, um, I am having, um, Greg Litten, who is the director of strategic housing, um, in the Black Hills, um, come in and present a presentation. They received thirty million dollars in grant money, um, that they are trying to disperse by the end of the year, which is why I'm pushing this meeting sooner. So we understand what it is and what we can do. Um, it's, um, loans for housing, for gap loans and land banking. Um, and that presentation will explain more of what that is and, and how we might be able to use that in our city to help um, build some housing that we might need. Um, my understanding is some more lower income housing, so maybe like senior housing and stuff like that. But, um, I invite you all to come to that if you can. Um, that's October seventeenth at ten thirty morning. I'll send out an email too, just to remind everybody so you remember that. Um, so that was my big announcement. Um, I've met with a bunch of people, more people. My head is spinning a little, the amount of people I've ever met, but I did get in touch with Hannah, with the governor's um, economic development department in Oxford, um, she's been great support for us. Um, I've been talking with Golden Shovel to update our website. Um, I've talked with, um, people down at the Black Hills, Council of Local Governments, Fran and Jennifer. Um, they've got some great resources for us and, and also, um, for our business members and maybe some new members. They have, um, they'll help you, um, do business plans and stuff like that. They won't write it for you, but they'll advise you on it and stuff like that. So if you know anybody that's wanting to get their business started, send them to me and, and I'll get them hooked up so that they can get get moving with that if they would like to do that. Um, and then our annual meeting will be November twentieth at six P M. And, um, our speaker will be, I wrote it in my notes, but I didn't write it here. I want to give you his full title. Um, it is, um, uh, he is the twenty-eighth Bomb Wing Deputy Commander, Colonel Joshua Lutala. And, um, he will be coming to our annual meeting to let us know what's going on with the base and all the people that are coming so that we can prepare for that. And maybe help out with that situation as well. So, um, I'm still really excited to move forward and to keep pushing to grow our businesses here. So if any of you have any ideas or thoughts or comments or anything like that, please hit me an email. Stop by my office, you know, chat with me and let me know, um, where you want to go, what kind of things you have so that I can, I can help you guys, um, grow well. Okay, that's really all I have. Anybody question to me? All right, I'll let that down.
Good job. Okay, finance report.
The, uh, twenty twenty-three audit has been concluded. And it's a preliminary that he sent me and I will get that sent out to you. And at the next meeting, I'll probably be asking for approval of that. Um, and that includes the single audit, which was required because we received more than seven hundred. Um, and that includes the single audit, which was required because we received more than seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money, which is due to their, their runway expansion. Part of that is the governor's letter that you guys are supposed to be presented and you can read through, I don't need approval on that, it's just something that you need to be aware of. And um, that kind of explains the process and all that is the audit for you guys. And then, um, the, I think is her name Angela or Angie Neeson from the Reed. She contacted me to see if we were ready to um, start with the Reed loan. Which I thought the project had to be one hundred percent complete, but she explained it could be between ninety and ninety-five percent complete. And I reached out to our engineer and he said, yes, we are ninety-five percent complete. So we will be taking those funds from Reed and then paying off the loan, construction loan that we have at the bank, which will, interest rates that.
What's the time process or how long will it be to reach you?
Um, I think she had a conference or something going on this next week, so she said it might be more towards the middle, towards the end of October, that they would have the documents put together that they will send us to sign, so.
Was that your question?
And then, let's see, um, yeah. So, and then just to give you an update that I will be out of the office next week, I didn't remember that. Starting on Monday the seventh, uh, to go down and do some software training on Tuesday morning at eight o'clock. Prior to the conference that'll be going on and um, just as an update, that's when I took over as the President of Position of the South Florida. Be kind of a scary and exciting time for me.
Congratulations.
They've already sent me the email reminding me that I need to write my.
Acceptance.
Well, not maybe that, but in the magazine.
Oh, you have to get my.
My local note in the, you know, the Philly magazine every month, so. I will be happy to think about that, so, that's all I have.
Okay, it'll be a big week, so we're excited about that. Okay. Garrett, what's been happening in public works lately?
Well, transfer stations up and going, they got the new chute in on the south side and everything's good. Uh, they're still waiting on the recycle bin, they have a dumpster now that they're putting recycled stuff in, but he's supposed to be getting a big one made with the doors on it for, you know, so they separate it there. I don't know, I guess you've all seen probably the water leak up on Crane Road when the leaking again uh, due to the condition of the old pipe. When we put the fitting on there, cracked the pipe and it ended up breaking or leaking just a little bit, it wasn't a huge leak, but so that's something we're gonna have to put in the budget for next year is to replace all of that because, you know, I said before, it starts in one spot and just just keeps breaking and, yeah, so.
So did you guys leave it or something for now or?
Uh, we just, we put another, we had another, uh, bigger fitting, this, these ones are kind of small, just two bolts. So we added another, we looked at the existing pipe, examined it, cut it off and then put a new piece of plastic pipe and then put the fitting on there to. So hopefully that doesn't break, so it's been a little pain up there. And so, yeah, I have some different ideas. You know, when we get to replace that, I was thinking about moving into the other, because the water main's on the east side of the road. You know, like where the county shop is, and I was thinking to move it on the west side, and that way we can keep the meat plant, everybody with water until it's done and then just to, that line, the existing line. Um, for that, we went over that already, it was good over there. Got my intern, Dan Anderson, the Senior of all high school, and today him and I on Fourth Avenue getting ready for the ribbon opening. I, I'm really glad that he's doing it, he's, that's a great kid. Or, I guess, so. And he'll be four days a week from twelve thirty to two thirty, so.
All year long.
All year long, yeah.
He said that a couple of times, I'm like, well.
Yeah, no, he'll fit right in with us.
You know, and I'm like, so what does that mean? You keep saying all year long.
Nope, and he's already, he's doing a good job. Been cleaning up at the rubble site, kind of got ignored this summer and, you know, cleaning up the building material and other stuff and I had him down there running the loader, he really enjoyed it, so. But it's a great program, I'm glad. Sally asked me if I wanted a couple more and I was like, no. I mean, I like, I really enjoy it, but it's just a couple could be way too many. I don't know about it, just pretty soon we'll be shutting off water and winterizing and.
Seen you guys down on the boulevard today looking in there, don't wanna talk about that.
Well, it's the, what's his name, Tom? Tom's really not satisfied with the work that's done down there. I guess him and I kind of see it different, so. I don't know what we'll do, I mean, we'll just have to eventually meet up with him, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the transit and shoot, you know, the, the bottom of the covert on the east side and the, the middle of the ditch and, and then the west side to see how much slope we have and how big a difference it is. So, yeah.
Continue to work together and get it solved and and go from there, yeah, so we're in conversation.
Gary went to, so wastewater training this week, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday and took an exam on wastewater collections, I think. And then he also sent me an email that he would like to attend another class in Mitchell on stabilization harness. Just sent that today, so I think we'll I'll park to it more and see what's going on, but we can prove that at the next council meeting. But I don't know, I mean, if it's a one day or, so I'm guessing it's probably just a one day.
Okay, any other question? Okay, good job. Okay, I am, um, twenty-five mayor's report. I plan on attending the Sato County Municipal League Conference also, I'll be going on Tuesday and back on Friday. And looking forward to talking to people and getting more information about, we're just learning a ton of stuff. Yesterday, um, Rashawn and I attended the Elevate Summit Meeting. Uh, that was about manufacturing, uh, supply chain, transportation and automation. And we networked and learned and met a lot of new people and made some connections there and it was excellent. And then I just want to remind you again that, uh, the ribbon cutting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, if you can make it.
And that's right at Fourth Avenue and the.
Like E, E.
E Free Church.
E Free Church parking lot, right there, and we're gonna hopefully have the sun be right so we can take a shot and show the whole street behind us, so. We'll see if that works, so. So, yeah, I have a photographer coming and so that's gonna happen, so. It's, it looks great. I hope the wind isn't blowing as bad as they say it's going to, so, okay.
It's very early, so it's not supposed to come up until like ten.
Oh, good, good. That would be great.
Work fast.
Okay, is there any other items for discussion tonight, anything, anyone? Mike has nothing, Rick, Stan, nothing, okay. The next city council meeting is gonna be October seventeenth at six thirty. And we do have a need for executive session, so, thank you, thank you, Rick. We'll get some paperwork to you, so you have a signature on something this time, okay?
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Have a good night, Rick. I make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two parentheses four.
And Zach is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, I'll see you. So, thank you, Rashawn.
You ready me for this?
No, so thank you very much.
You are very welcome.
For making notes for us tonight. Thank you for taking notes for us tonight, we appreciate that. We'll see you tomorrow. Don't forget the red tape, the ribbon and the.
I won't escape in the big season, I'm a person.
Okay, okay.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, I call us out of executive session, does anyone have any motions to be made? Seeing none, I call the meeting adjourned.